No.
Almost a pretty one. Okay.
I've read that stuff though.
Yes, so...
Or do it count as one? Two?
What about watch we see?
My goodness.
I was gonna say, yeah, I've got...
I've got the assistant one.
I guess the question is, you know, if it's a little too...
Like what order do they go in? So we need to know what they should have for the... Like older, not that...
I love you guys.
It's older ten, maybe two, section one, two, three. One, two, one. And then it should be... Okay. And then it should be... Yeah, give me the... Okay.
And Julia Joyce.
Julia.
Julia, okay. Good evening, we'll call this meeting to order if you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated, and Teresa, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Decorsy.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Jiraj.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Excused.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Excused. All right, we have a couple of different presentations this evening. The first one is by our incredible Police Department. Chief O'Neil, I believe you wanted to say a few words and then Commander Betts will take over, is that correct?
I was just gonna turn it all over to Commander Betts.
All right, well, and so you said a few words and now we'll take, now we'll turn it over to Commander Betts.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, thank you for your time, thank you for sparing a few moments for us this evening to acknowledge three of our amazing employees. The Valley SWAT team, as you may be aware, were part of the Valley SWAT team and recently they were part of a hostage rescue mission where they actually saved the life of a young female in an incident in Issaquah. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a little bit about the incident and about what each person did, the three individuals that we are acknowledging tonight. But first, I just wanna say that one thing that we really focus on, is a primary focus for us on SWAT, is the priorities of life and the, it drives our missions in a lot of ways and hostages are at the very top. And so these, these three men, especially tonight, and the rest of the fellows on the team and the females as well, we have females on our team as well that are amazing. They all understand that the hostages are at the top and that sometimes they may need to put themselves between the hostage taker and the hostages themselves and it could actually cost them their lives. And they've all taken that mission to heart and this was a clear example of what, of putting that into actual practice. Some of these, some of these men, I've been, I've worked around for Officer Lyman, I've worked around for, I know it was three and a half years last Saturday, actually. And then Officer Anderson and Officer McNabb, I worked with for over a decade. And some of them I've been able to serve with for over a decade, or about a decade on SWAT. And I can tell you that they put in a lot of extra time to not only prepare their mind but prepare their bodies for what they would have to do if it would come to that time where they need to save one of you, save one of you or one of your loved ones. And they would willingly do that. So they have my highest respect and affection and I just wanna thank you for letting, for letting us take some time tonight. So first, if I can have them three come up here, please. One thing that these, one thing that these, that the men and women on our team are very good about is they are very good about knowing the situation and knowing when to show the appropriate level of compassion in a situation. And this is, this is around our region with our police departments and especially Auburn Police. Very good about showing the proper, the reasonable and necessary level of compassion, but also sometimes we need to show the reasonable and necessary use of aggressiveness. And these guys are shining examples of how they can employ that and especially in this situation with their aggressiveness but also morphed into compassion by saving the hostage. So I will read about, I'm gonna read about the incident and then I'll make it person-specific on each one. On February 16th, 2020, V-SWAT members responded to a request to relieve Seattle PD for a hostage rescue incident in Issaquah. It was reported that a suspect had taken his sister hostage and was barricaded in the attic of their residence. It was also reported that the suspect had discharged a firearm at King County Sheriff's Office personnel when the incident initially began. It was believed that the hostage was being forcibly held against her will and that she was in danger of being seriously injured and/or killed by the suspect due to his actions. V-SWAT members deployed inside the structure and established positions on the top floor of the residence so that they could effect an emergency rescue of the hostage if possible. V-SWAT members were fully aware of the extreme risk of serious bodily injury and/or death that could result to each or all of them during this operation. Understanding the life safety priorities, V-SWAT members showed extreme courage by placing themselves in positions to risk their own personal safety to attain the mission of saving the hostage. V-SWAT members did not know the location of the suspect or the hostage in the attic. V-SWAT members could hear movement in the attic and believe that the suspect was moving around. Swap, V-SWAT members were aware that the suspect was believed to be, to still be in possession of a firearm and could discharge it in their direction at any moment. And then specific to Officer Lyman. Auburn PD Officer Kenny Lyman deployed with an element of V-SWAT members inside the structure and set up as an emergency rescue element on the first floor in a room with an attic access point. Officer Lyman stayed inside the structure until the hostage was rescued. During this operation, Officer Lyman, along with all of the other V-SWAT members on the first floor, willingly placed himself in areas with the high probability of exposure to serious bodily injury and/or death for the ability to save the hostage. They had no idea where the armed suspect was located directly above them and were susceptible to the suspect's gunfire at any moment. This is the first hostage rescue mission performed by V-SWAT. Members train for hostage rescue missions constantly and this is an example of the courage, professionalism, leadership and competence on V-SWAT. Officer Lyman is a tremendous representative of the Auburn Police Department core values through his courage, honor, integrity and professionalism as demonstrated in this incident. And now for Officer McNabb. I'm not gonna go over the entire synopsis again, I'll just, I'm gonna go to specifically what Officer McNabb did on the incident. V-SWAT members Jake Carsonson from Renton PD, Michael McNabb from Auburn PD and Matt Roush from Kent PD were instrumental by evacuating the hostage out of the attic access opening while the suspect was in an unknown location in the attic above them. The hostage was rescued, unharmed, and the task was completed without making the suspect aware of the actions. Officer McNabb's bravery and selfless actions greatly contributed to the hostage's being rescued. Officer McNabb is a tremendous representative of the Auburn Police Department core values as well through his courage, honor, integrity and professionalism as demonstrated in this incident. And now to Officer Anderson. While still deployed on the first floor, Renton PD Officer Scott Bauer and Auburn PD Officer Brian Anderson were able to see and recognize the hostage's hand and arm come down through a hole in the ceiling in a bathroom. The hole that the hand and arm came through was made by a previous SWAT team. The hand and arm was waving frantically for assistance. Officer Bauer and Officer Anderson stayed calm and professional with this new priority information. Officer Bauer was able to comfort the female by grabbing onto her arm and hand in an effort to reassure her that assistance was nearby. Officer Anderson stayed vigilant and communicated with V-SWAT Team Leader, Renton PD Officer Eric Gordon about the new information. Officer Bauer was able to communicate with the hostage and realized that the suspect was in another area of the attic and the hostage could escape to a nearby attic access opening where more V-SWAT members were located. The hostage was rescued moments later by nearby, by nearby V-SWAT members and was unharmed. Officer Anderson's quick thinking and selfless actions greatly contributed to the hostage being rescued. Officer Anderson is another tremendous representative of the Auburn Police Department core values through his courage, honor, integrity and professionalism as was demonstrated in this incident. Thank you for your time tonight and thank you for allowing us to recognize these three. And I'd also like to recognize other members that we have of V-SWAT in the room. Detective Pearson, Sergeant Skeen, who is the leader of our Auburn SWAT team, and then Detective Lind and Commander Selig from the Port of Seattle. And hopefully I'm not missing anybody else. Okay, I don't see anybody else. And then Chief of Issaquah as well, thank you for being here as well, sir.
Commander Betts, thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Our officers, as you know, put themselves, as Commander Betts said, in the line of harm each day. And I was getting updates during this hostage situation and how proud I am to say that you were the third team in, correct? You were on the third, the third team and look at how many Auburn officers were there to be part of that successful evacuation of a hostage. That speaks volumes about the, the level of professionalism that we have in the Auburn Police Department and also in V-SWAT. Let's not forget the amazing work that is being done in, in that organization. But Officers Anderson, Lyman and McNabb, thank you so very much for your bravery, for your service to this community and outside this community and the region. Thank you. And so if we could have you come and just shake hands with Council as well, I'm sorry, I'm usually over there at the podium to just say thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator. Thank you so much, Senator. Thank you very much, Senator. Thank you so much. Good job. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I haven't even seen you say congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thanks for your time tonight. Sir.
And for the rest of the officers that are here from, from Valley SWAT, thank you for your amazing work and dedication to our community. All right, I am going to go and, to the podium for a proclamation. And Councilmember Sterns, would you like to join me?
I'm just proud.
Thank you to the families as well for allowing us to have the amazing service of your loved ones. We know that there are amazing sacrifices on your part as well. Thank you. All right, we have a proclamation this evening about Problem Gambling Awareness Month and I believe we have at least two representatives from the Evergreen Council on problem gambling. Board members Eva James and Julia Joyce, is that right? Would you like, just you? Eva, would you like to come forward then as we read the proclamation? And thank you for joining us this evening. Whereas, problem gambling is a public health issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races and ethnic backgrounds that has a significant societal and economic cost for individuals, families, businesses and communities. And whereas, research indicates that thousands of adults and adolescents in Washington State have experienced gambling problems in their lives. And whereas, problem gambling is treatable and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole. And whereas, numerous professionals, individuals and nonprofit organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of the public about problem gambling and the availability and effectiveness of treatment. And whereas, it is important that the gambling industry and the mental health, primary care treatment and recovery communities join together to increase public awareness of problem gambling, its high co-occurrences with anxiety and substance use disorders and to take measures to address this addiction. Now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim May, March 2020 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month and encourage all residents to learn more about the signs of problem gambling and encourage action among friends, families, patients and clients on the availability of treatment dated the second day of March 2020. Eva, I will happily give this proclamation to you and I'm sure you probably have a few words that you would like to say, please.
On behalf of myself and Evergreen Council for problem gambling, I'd like to thank you for bringing awareness to problem gambling and supporting access to treatment services. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sterns, having a background, if you would like, like to say a few words.
Sure.
You don't get to go away.
Yeah, and thank you Mayor and thank you Eva. You know, most adults who gamble won't have a problem with gambling, but the research in our state indicates that 2% to 4% of adults in Washington are gonna be at least at risk for developing a problem. And that's between 118,000 and 226,000 people here in Washington. And during, another thing is during March Madness this year, it's estimated that the public will wager about $10 billion in sports betting in the U.S. And just to back up what everyone has said, problem gambling, it's a disease. It's diagnosable and it's treatable. It's not a moral failing, it is a clinical disease. And so I'm just really glad that we're, you know, that our city takes this seriously. And just to let everyone know that there is a problem gambling hotline and it's available 24/7 and it's 1-800-547-6133. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eva, if you would like to go forward and accept the appreciation of Council for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to appointments. Tonight, we have Human Services Committee appointments. City Council to appoint Carmen Goyers and Janine Lacasse to the Human Services Committee for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2022. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Decorsy.
Thank you Mayor. I move to approve the Human Services appointments.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
Second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Decorsy.
Thank you Mayor, we really appreciate these two individuals stepping forward and reviewing their resumes. They come with a lot of experience and background that I know will be a great help to the Human Services Committee and also the information to be presented to Council in the future.
Thank you very much. All right, questions or comments from Council? All those in favor of the appointments to the Human Services Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, do we have any agenda modifications, Teresa? Council, I believe everyone has a copy, all right. All right, we have no public hearings this evening, so we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided and please limit comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, okay. First thing I wanted to mention was about the homeless.
We need your name and address for the record.
Okay, Linda Redman. And I'm at 2704 18th Street Southeast in Auburn. And the first thing I wanted to say was about the homeless issue. I wanna put a word in for that, if I heard that there was the 150,000 that was given to different areas and, and the idea was to pool it, but it really, there might be, I thought, well, maybe it could go to buy a piece of land and then next year, put some housing on it. I talked to a homeless person, Kevin, who was at the library a lot, and he wanted to come to this meeting and just say that he really wants the housing, you know, and he suggested that the city might have some land and so that the high school might be able to build tiny homes to put on the land. So he also thought of a piece that, a guy that had a lot of ducks and stuff on 29th. He passed away and could that be one, you know, so I wanna put that word in for Kevin. And then I wanna put the word in that if there, he, he could be a good person, a good anchor for like a little community of tiny homes. Or it could be one large structure. I've seen one in Vaushean Island that's like a barn shape and then the little rooms are right off the side and there's a common kitchen and then there could be, you know, bathroom that people share. So there was a recreation area, so then it's all in just one building. So that's, that topic. And then the other topic is that our laws, there's getting to be confusion, I believe, with our laws. If you look into it, our laws are based on the Bible. And the, I believe that the founders, when they said religions in the First Amendment, they were thinking denominations. They just, they, they did see Catholics and they, but a lot of were Protestants and they were having this issue of Catholic-like denomination running the government of Virginia and some other states, that was the Episcopal Church. So when they got that religious statute of religious freedom, then Thomas Jefferson became president and they didn't have a denomination running the state. But I think that they meant the idea to have God above government, to have this direct connection as we still have. You know, we give the Pledge of Allegiance, we have some things like that in our system. So I just think that we can have less gun violence and things. If we can just be able to get our, ask our Supreme Court, could they clarify that? Because how did they decide, okay, no polygamy?
Right, Ms. Redman, I'm going to need to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, so it's, somehow I will just wanna put a word in that we could like look into that maybe and see if our, if our people in our region might consider that, that we could clarify our, our laws. Clarify the, get our state Supreme Court to clarify the Constitution, that, that the Declaration could be a preamble and that the phrase I said could be...
I do need you to wrap up, all right.
So...
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, we will move on from public comment to...
Virginia Haugen, 2503 R Street Southeast, Auburn. I didn't hear that lady's name, but I certainly understand what she's talking about. I just found out over the weekend that I had a homeless camp right over the fence from my house and they never bothered me a bit. However, the fact that all my neighbors are cutting down the trees, that bothers me because I get a lot of wind. The City of Auburn is using a building at Lesco Park that could have been used as a homeless shelter. Instead, we run people off of public property. I know of another location, I was out there, it's on the north end and I saw homeless people locked out of city property. Now there are buildings all over it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, we will move on. We have no correspondents this evening. Council ad hoc reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. Our current ad hoc committee is Finance and that is chaired by Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Committee, consisting of Councilmember Sterns and myself, reviewed the vouchers, consisting of about 30-some pages of claims vouchers totaling about $2.6 million dated the March 2nd of this year. And we also reviewed payroll vouchers in, in the amount of $2.6 million for a total of $5.2 million altogether. The payroll vouchers were dated between 12 February to 24 February and we recommend the Council approval.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Decorsy.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
I would second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Decorsy.
Thank you Mayor. Today's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the February 10th, 2020 and the February 24th, 2020 study session meeting. The minutes of the February 18th, 2020 special council meeting. Minutes of the February 18th, regular council meeting. And the claims and payroll vouchers as described by Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move on, no unfinished business, no new business. We will move to ordinances. Ordinance number 6735, an ordinance granting a franchise for water facilities to the City of Tacoma. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you Mayor, I would like to move that we adopt ordinance number 6735.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Jiraj.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you Mayor. 6735 allows the city to grant a franchise for Tacoma Water. Tacoma Water has applied for a new franchise agreement to continue to operate their water facilities within the city's rights of way as their previous franchise agreement has recently expired. Tacoma Water currently provides water services to the city and the Water District 111 within the city limits. They do not provide residential water service within the city.
Thank you. Comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6735, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Ordinance number 6762, an ordinance relating to the regulations of fireworks and amending sections 8.24.030 and 8.24.050 and repealing section 2.22.190 of the Auburn City Code. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Sterns.
I move that we...
Your microphone, please.
Move that we pass ordinance number 6762.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance is going to decriminalize the, the use of fireworks. This ordinance is going to decriminalize the use of fireworks in Auburn. We've heard from the police about how the criminal misdemeanor penalty that exists now is inflexible and an inefficient means of enforcement of the city's fireworks code, and it requires a high standard of proof. The new ordinance will move those violations to civil infractions. The first infraction will cost $250. The second one will have a penalty of up to $500. And the third, a penalty of up to $1,000 with some possible jail time of up to 90 days. This ordinance makes a lot of sense, and we pass it.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 6762, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution number 5500, a resolution authorizing an application to the Port of Seattle for Economic Development Partnership Program grant funds, and to accept and expend funds if awarded. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 5500.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
As the mayor mentioned, this is a, from the Port of Seattle for Economic Development, the Economic Development Partnership Program, and to accept the funds provided and to expend those funds. And the program grant monies for Auburn will equal approximately $32,500, actually, $32,500. And the city's matching funds have previously been budgeted, and do not require additional unbudgeted funds from the city.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number 5500, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution number 5503, a resolution ratifying the mayor's emergency proclamation. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move for adoption of resolution number 5503.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Jay Raj.
I second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you. The resolution number 5503 will ratify your emergency proclamation made February 20th, 2020, regarding the severe weather storm event that began on January 20th, 2020. The state proclamation of emergency was made on February 5th, 2020 regarding this storm event. The storm impacted city road conditions and deposited significant debris in the White River upstream of the city's A Street Southeast Bridge during the following event, following the event. The deposited debris has the potential to cause further flooding upstream of the bridge, and was a potential risk to the stability of the city's bridge.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? All those in favor of resolution number 5503, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move on to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin this evening with Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
All right, we will move to Councilmember Sterns.
Hi, thank you. So on Thursday, the 12th, I should take that back. It was actually on Wednesday, the 26th, time flies. I attended the Washington Resources Inventory Management Committee and Washington Watershed Economic Forum. And that is, I just want to say, honored to continue on in the footsteps of Councilmember Bill Pelosi, who devoted such an incredible amount of time. When I walked into that room, and everyone wanted to know how Bill was doing, and they were just glad that someone was there who could, you know, share in his vision and carry on that work, which I'd like to attempt to do. We heard a lot at the meeting, it was focused on the ongoing efforts. It'd been going on for years, to build a new salmon and trout passage over the Howard Hansen Dam, which is up a ways, I'm not very scientific or technical, but it's up a ways along the Green River. And that has been a project that has been identified a need for, for, it goes back decades. And so there was a recent push by the entire Washington congressional delegation. You know, there is a lot of partisanship, but this is one of those things where all the Republican and all the Democratic members signed a letter to the Trump administration asking them to put money into building this fish passage, and would open up about 60 miles of spawning grounds on the Green River for salmon and trout. And obviously, that would not just benefit the salmon and trout, but it would also benefit the orcas, whose diet really depends upon the salmon. So that's a major effort, and there's some good news to hear about that. And the timetable still weighs off, the money flows, the idea is to get it built and done with by 2030. So that's the, that's the major update from that committee meeting. And the second thing is, I was able to go take a quick tour with the Port of Seattle for the new international arrivals facility, which is basically the screening terminal for international flights. It's absolutely amazing. The terminal itself is really going to be operated, and it's actually being built to the specifications of the Customs and Border Protection. So it's a port, it's in the port, but it's actually really a CBP operation. And it's going to really make a big difference, I think, in terms of how flights come in and out of C-TAC. So that was good news, and it was good, you know, because we have such a good partnership with the Port of Seattle. So it was good to do that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Been a kind of a busy couple of weeks, and to give you a report on a couple of things that are kind of coming up. The Skateboard, as we call it, which is really the, if I can get the terminology correct here, South County Area Transportation Board. We had a meeting on the 18th of February, and summarized basically a couple of issues. The biggest one was the road usage charge, which basically has been on several people's minds here lately about the electric vehicles and the gas taxes, and how they're going to make this thing balance out over time. Well, the state has now finished their pilot program, and I think they're ready to start with the state vehicles. And it looks like they're going to start, hopefully, with a resolution to complete transition to electric vehicles by 2030, 2035, in that category. They're using kind of a rate of 2.4 cents per mile as an equivalent of about 49.4 cents per gallon of gas tax from the state. The jury's still out on the type of measurement systems that they might invoke. Some would be like on the honor system, others might be more technically oriented with monitors being placed in the vehicle, use of GPS systems, things of that nature that are already on most vehicles. Anyway, the revenue and cost estimates have been developed for both the road usage charge and the gas tax through 2040. So this is going to be an important thing that's going to affect many of us, especially if you're going to go out and buy an electric vehicle. So it's going to be, the thing that they really want to stress here is privacy, fairness, system cost, of course, how do you deal with out-of-state drivers, and basically the effect on purchasing of plug-in electrical vehicles. So there's going to be more to come on this, but as we move through the year. But they're hoping, like I said, by 2030, at the earliest, to expand to all vehicles within the state. And the state of Oregon and the state of Utah have already adopted these, with many other states following through pilot programs. The other issue on transit and transportation is the Regional Transit Committee. And, you know, with the new year and everything, the basic planning documentation for Metro is what they call Metro Connects. And they've been busy updating all of these plans and everything, including a lot of cost estimates, which seem to be lacking in the plans that they've had. Not to mention the fact that they're looking, as we heard here a few weeks ago, about a new bus barn that they're contemplating having here in the Auburn or Kent area. So all of this has to be considered, along with electrification. They've already got plans to buy 120 battery-operated buses with long-range battery power. Things like Initiative I-976 has come into play with Metro. And even though this has been upheld by the King County Superior Court, they're expecting appeals to take place here, and perhaps a resolution by the end of the year. So there's going to be a lot of things happening here in the transportation world, and a lot of it involves money. So stay tuned, and we will keep you informed as we move through the process here with these committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown. Thank you, Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of things I want to say. February 21st, I was able to, myself and Councilmember Sterns, were able to go to the MNO. And, I do have it on.
And what does MNO stand for?
Maintenance and Operations.
There we go.
I passed.
You did, you passed.
He's an aerospace guy in Africa, you know how it is.
So I want to thank Director Gob and Randy Bailey for giving us a tour of the operation. It is amazing to see how much you folks are doing with what you have, which is not much. So I want to say I really appreciate what you do. Later that evening, Councilmember Malanga and I visited the Auburn Police Department. And I want to thank Deputy Chief Callier for giving us a tour of the department. As a citizen and a council member, it is surprising how cramped you guys are. It was mind-blowing for me. I wouldn't put up with it myself. So with that said, thank you very much for the tour. Really appreciate it. And I must commend MNO and the Auburn Police Department for everything you guys are doing for our city with what you have. It is amazing. Thank you very much. One more thing.
Yes.
And on February 28th evening, I had a ride along with Officer Andrew Bryant. Interesting character.
Do tell.
We had, it was, we were laughing a lot. We had a lot of stimulating conversations. Everything and every, anything about traffic, and our families, and where we've been. And interestingly enough, he's been, he's been to Singapore and Malaysia, where I grew up. So that was a nice conversation as well, so. Thank you very much, once again. He's a great cop. Thank you.
Thank you. So the last two weeks for our office have been not surprisingly focused on regional homelessness, as well as the legislature and some of the bills that could significantly impact our city. One of them, as I've spoken about before, House Bill 2907, has been changed to House Bill 2948. It is still a great number of moving pieces. The, I went down with Redmond Mayor Angela Burney on Thursday to testify on this new bill, because there's still a great deal of information that has been, that has not been forthcoming to the cities in order to understand what the impact is to the businesses within our communities. And it's challenging to be able to support something like that without the knowledge of what it does to the businesses that are in your town. There has been some movement over the weekend. I received a phone call this weekend from the vice chair of the House Finance Committee saying that the comments that we made during our testimony have been heard. There is significant discussion now, instead of simply allocating equal dollars to the east side and to South King County for affordable housing, that there will now be an equal number of units, or that is the proposal, an equal number of units in South King County and on the east side. Because if it's, if it's simply a matter of allocating equal dollars, there will be many, many more units of housing built in South King County as opposed to the east side. What that does is it, it removes an opportunity from those individuals who live, or who work on the east side to have affordable housing on the east side. It adds to an already significant abundance of affordable housing. Even though we can always use more, we want to ensure that it is equitable throughout our community, throughout the region. And so we have asked them to focus on units as opposed to dollars. There have been discussions on increasing the revenue threshold from 3 million to 5 million. That is a significant change, as well as increasing the employee headcount for a business to be subject to this payroll tax up to 50 employees, as opposed to previously where if you had 50 employees or fewer, if half of you, if half of your employees, or more than half of your employees met that $150,000 threshold, then they were subject, you were subject to that tax. Now, if the changes go through, if the amendments go through, it would only apply to businesses with 50 or more employees. So that's some significant movement. However, there is also a significant change in the payroll tax percentage. The original Bill 2907 had a 1/10th to 2/10th percent tax, payroll tax on businesses. This new language is 0.28 percent on all businesses, with an additional 0.1 percent available to cities to enact. We have asked that the language for cities and the 1/10th be removed from that language, because, to be quite honest with you, cities already have that ability, as provided by the legislature several years ago. There is no need for that language to be included in there. There is also some talk of preemption in that, in the proposal, so that cities cannot triple and quadruple tax businesses. So I do not know, after the executive session today, it did not make it out of finance. Time is running short for it to make it to the House floor for a vote, and then it would go through a similar process on the Senate side. So with only about a week and a half left in this session, if there are no extensions, we don't know the likelihood at this point of this bill going forward. But we will keep all of you posted. And then the other big issue, as most of you are aware, the COVID-19 or coronavirus epidemic or outbreak that has been identified in King County. In fact, there have been six deaths in the United States so far. All six of them have, have occurred in either King County or Snohomish County. have, have occurred in either King County or Snohomish County. And so we are, as a city, putting together what our responses will be. We will keep council apprised, as well as the public. I just want to share with you a few items that we can all do very easily in order to help ensure our own safety. So increase hand washing and use of alcohol-based sanitizer. I keep one with me in my purse. I, for those of you that don't use purses, I suggest that you carry one with you in your pockets.
I have a spray.
Or a spray, yes. It's, it's important to keep your hands clean, and if you are using soap and water, then vigorously for 20 seconds. Sing the ABC song or the Happy Birthday song while you are washing your hands with lots of friction to ensure, because this virus can be removed with, with the hot water and soap and rigorous scrubbing. Respiratory hygiene and cough etiquette. Don't cough with your mouth open. Don't use your hand to cover your mouth if you're coughing. They teach the children in school, cough into your, they crick in your arm, is a much healthier way for you to cough. Keep distance from others. They are, they are recommending greater than six feet away from one another, not necessarily something we are accomplishing here this evening. But that is, keeping distance from others is the most basic form of social distancing that reduce opportunities for person-to-person virus transmission. Frequently clean and disinfect surfaces. Contact transmission, such as transfer the virus from contaminated objects to eyes, nose, or mouth, is a recognized route of the virus spread. Remain home during an illness, unless it's to go to a medical facility. It is not considered a badge of honor to come to work ill, especially right now, so I encourage everyone who is not feeling well, if at all possible, to stay home. If you can work virtually, do so. As I mentioned, we are putting together protocol here in Auburn. There will be an email going out to all employees. We will continue to update on social media. And at 4:00 PM tomorrow, we are calling a mayor's task force of stakeholders within the community, including the Auburn School District, Auburn Multi-Care, the Outlet Collection, Faith-Based Community, and many others, to ensure that we have an adequate response to this outbreak and hopefully be able to not have any significant losses or illnesses within our city. Our thoughts and prayers go to those who have lost loved ones with this outbreak. We will be continuing to take our lead from the state, as well as King and Pierce County. And our emergency manager, Jerry Thorson, is doing an excellent job of keeping us all apprised of what's going on. So more to come, but I encourage you all to take your personal health and safety with a great deal of seriousness at all times, but especially right now. Ms. City Attorney, do we have need for an executive or closed session this evening?
No, not this evening, thank you.
That is wonderful news. We are adjourned. Thank you.